Please stand, join Councilman Robb, pledge our country and the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any doubt, just as for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as we gather here tonight, we humbly come before you with hearts open and minds ready to serve our community. Grant us wisdom to make decisions that will benefit all who call Guthrie home. Guide our discussions so that they may be fruitful and respectful, mindful of the diverse needs and perspectives of our fellow citizens. Help us to listen with empathy and to speak with clarity and understanding. We ask for your blessings and safety upon our city, its residents, and those who lead and serve it. May we always strive for justice, equality, and harmony in all of our endeavors. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Call to order then our Guthrie City Council meeting of March 19th. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. I don't believe we have any at this time. Third item on the agenda is consent agenda items A through H. And I would like to make note on agenda item 3A. The minutes that were sent to all the councilmen had an inadvertent date of March 19th on the header. It has subsequently been corrected and was redistributed, I believe, today to all the council members. So that will have to be an amendment as corrected for the approval. B is the approval of the CPI Consumer Price Index Amendment, which is a standard part of all of our hanger lease agreements for hanger number 10. GJ and LO TNT Insurance Company. C is the approval of the CPI Amendment for hanger number 12, HG Adams. D is the approval of the CPI Amendment for hanger number 16, Alpine Aviation. E is the approval of the CPI Amendment for hanger 16A, Chaparral Hanger. F is the approval of the CPI Amendment for hanger 23A, BC Guthrie Hanger. G is the approval of the CPI Amendment for hanger 24D, BTR Aviation. And H is the CPI Amendment for hanger 27, Kent Officer. I'll entertain a motion to approve with the...
With the approval of the correction.
Correction of the date.
Second.
Have a motion and a second with the correction as stated. Any other questions? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Oh, we're missing two. Approval of all those present then to approve the consent agenda items A through H.
You can be lonely down there Brian.
Item four, we had no items to remove from the consent agenda. Item number five, next generation 911 presentation. You know, it's always, you always want to be in the front of the line when it comes to public safety for our citizens. And we have an opportunity here in Guthrie and in a small regional area to be in front of the line as it pertains to 911 communications. Brent, are you taking the lead? Chief, you want...
I'm gonna step up there real quick and then Brent will pop right up.
Okay, all right. Chief, lead this, lead this on. Tell us why we're so fortunate.
Thank you Mayor. This year is my 30th or 31st year in law enforcement. I've been all over the state. And I can tell you that there are COGS all over the state that handle various things. And one of the things that directly involves with public safety is the 911 system. The last place I worked with, I couldn't tell you how long their 911 equipment had been outdated because there were so much constant infighting that we could never spend the money on serving the citizens the way we're supposed to and the way we should be. Brent and his team, and of course the mayor, you're, you're on the...
I'm on the COG.
The COG, and then you have...
Councilmember Robb is also...
We, we, not me, Brent and his team have been working on this next generation 911 for a long time. And I think it was 18 or 24 months ago when I was here talking to you about text and 911 and how we've got the first one in the, in the, in the state and how we, we were able to locate the person because of that, save a life probably. And now we're talking about some new stuff, sending pictures, being able to send some video, being able to do the X and Y axis along with the Z axis. So ideally, you know, we can tell how high up in a building someone is. And we go from 100 and someone feet right now.
Correct, 164.
164 feet, that's as close as I can get when you call 911 on, on a, on a cellphone.
That's the FCC requirement.
And you think that's good.
It's not.
You get out in some of these areas and it's not. Now we're going to what, 10, 20?
Less than eight.
Less than eight.
Oh wow.
So we're very excited. I'm gonna let Brent step up here and talk to you about it.
Chief, one of you's government office.
There you go. Thanks Brent.
So ladies and gentlemen, Brett Hawkinson is the Director of 911 and Public Safety for, for the ACOG, Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. And it involves the central part of the state. And, and this, this has been your baby for a while in the development. And as the chief has already identified, we're the first in the state and maybe a model for even a region or country.
I hope so.
And so Brent Hawkinson, it's yours.
Well, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to come and, and talk. And, and really, there's, there's really just two portions to a next generation 911 system. And we have acquired both for you, for the citizen. The first part is a call routing solution, which basically replaces all the legacy telephony components, which is AT&amp;T. Now, I'm a retiree of AT&amp;T after 30 years, six months and 26 days, but I really wasn't counting. And back then, we were Southwest Rebel, SBC, and then AT&amp;T, whatever they called us, whatever weekend was, it was kind of hard to determine. But we have the call routing solution, which our vendor is called NGA, Next Generation Advanced, and the call handling solution, which is called the Comtech Guardian. So the Comtech Guardian solution, which is what, what the dispatcher sees, is what the dispatcher uses to communicate with the caller. Our current solution is provided by Entrado, it's called Viper, and that is what has been replaced up to Midwest City, which we just turned up last week on the 26th, which is next Tuesday. We'll turn up Dell City, and then on April 2nd, Guthrie. So with those two solutions, we bring you the very best technology for next generation, which like the chief was talking about, it's going to be the transference of video, the transferance of pictures, what they call real-time text. So that's not only where a caller can text in, but the dispatcher can text out. If, if, very critical if it comes to a point where a person cannot text or cannot call because of a hostage situation. So that's where the chief said, they've already had several cases where that has happened, where someone has been able to text, where they couldn't call. And, and with this solution, instead of 164 feet, 50 meters, which is what the FCC requires upon call delivery of wireless, it will be within eight feet. And not only that, the system does what's called an automatic rebid every eight seconds so we can monitor the motion and the movement of that wireless caller while it's in progress. So these are critical components that come to the dispatcher to help the citizen when it's their worst day. And that system has to work 100%. In the last 24 months, we've had multiple delays, but like I was telling the city manager, it's because we're not going to bring anything to the citizens except a 100% accurate system. And the key components of this entire system, the call routing and the call handling solution is accuracy. It's GIS-based graphical, geographical information systems, and it, and it focuses on address points, which are the X, Y coordinates, coordination, and then within building, the Z axis or the Z coordination, the vertical, vertical axis. So it, it comes at a time when, when the nation is having so many problems, if you will, so many incidents, that it's imperative that the call taker, the dispatcher, be able to have the very best information available and the accuracy of it and the data that comes along with the call to be able to help that person or persons when life is at its worst. And that's it in a nutshell. That's what the system does. We have relied upon those legacy components for a long time. They have served us well. When I was with AT&amp;T, the last seven years I was with the 911 organization, and I can tell you that those components worked most of the time. But in the last several years, ACOG has experienced so many different failures on the AT&amp;T side. And what's disturbing about that is through the years, there, with attrition and with the downsizing, there's not backfill, so knowledgeable people on getting problems addressed quickly, especially since it's 911, are not as available. So we end up having long-term outages, and that's, that's unacceptable. This solution is, as far as the call routing is concerned, it's all cloud-based. High-speed internet access from our provider through their engine to our hosts and ultimately out to the 911 center. And that's, that pretty much covers it.
Questions from council members.
I remember when you were talking about that about, what, probably two years ago, I think, when you started talking about it, I was coming to the meetings then, and it was, I thought, man, if this gets going, this can be one of the best things that ever happened to us. And it'll, it'll help everybody, like I said. And I know the chief's excited about it as well, so I applaud you guys for what you've done.
This system takes the handset-based technology and, and answers the, the, oh, decades-long question. Why can't the pizza guy find me, but 911 can't?
So how do you text 911?
Just with you, with your, as you're opening up a text, type help, and then for the, for the address, 911. And currently Guthrie, which is one of, of the ECCs within the region, has the ability to receive that text. What they don't have as a feature is the ability to monitor that, that call and to monitor that, that texture in, in real time, to be able to see movement and track movement. And the, the distance compared to what it is now will be within that eight feet. So it brings a much more valuable tool to the dispatcher to help that call taker.
So the dispatcher will actually see it on a map?
That's correct.
And so they'll know if the perp is dragging the person away or whatever's going on?
They see that movement. When, when we turned up text and 911, we did it with Oklahoma City. We rolled it out with Oklahoma City. And the day before Edmund had taken a text call because the service was already working, it just wasn't announced, but they had gotten a, a call from a person, and then a woman, and she immediately hung up and then texted. And they saw the same MDN, the mobile display number. And then they knew that they had a, a person in peril.
Aye.
And her ex-husband was kidnapping her and taking her whoever, wherever, but she was able to text, and he wasn't able to see what she was doing. And she was able to continue to stay in touch with Edmund, with the, the police station there, and they were able to find her. They were able to pinpoint exactly where she was headed, and they stopped the man at an intersection.
Because even if she stopped texting, it's still gonna track her.
That's correct.
Yeah. Once she texts initially...
As long as that call is still in progress.
So are you typing on the text 405, whatever, whatever, you just type in 911?
To, when you hit, to, to hit send, you, you pull up your, in fact...
Got an emergency deal on there too.
Yes. So in, in the two bar, you just type 911 and then your message in the, in the message bar. Now, we could do that right here and it would go to Guthrie PD. They wouldn't appreciate us doing that. But they could answer it.
This is a test. Well, I think the, the criticality, if you're, let's just say you're trapped in a fire and you happen to be in a closet, that difference between 164, what did you say?
Feet.
Feet and eight feet is a huge difference to the firemen and women that are coming to save you.
That's correct.
I mean, that's huge.
That's correct.
And yeah, it's, it's lifesaving. And we are, because of Brent and ACOG, we here in Guthrie are on the front line of that being April 2nd is rollout for us, right?
That's correct. When we install, we, we finish placing the, the workstations on the first, and we turn you up live on April 2nd.
Fantastic. Other questions? Brent, I know you've spent a huge amount of time in making this happen as the, as the front and spokesperson for the ACOG for 911, the next gen 911. Appreciate your service there. Appreciate everything that you do for the ACOG area, especially for Guthrie, America.
Well, it's my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
My pleasure. This is a great city.
Yeah.
And I had a wonderful opportunity when I was with AT&amp;T to work with Guthrie as well, because ACOG was our largest customer when I was in 911. So Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity. You all are incredible.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number six is a public hearing for, on dilapidated structures. Discussion, consideration, possible action to conduct public hearing to determine property identified in resolution number 2024-02, dilapidated structure. I will need a motion for us to move into public hearing.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there any question for discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move into a public hearing mode. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's kind of like the last item. I'm gonna give a little introduction and then hand it over to Noah to go through everything. But I just wanted to introduce again, this is our annual dilapidated structures program where we're looking to have homes in the community declared dilapidated so we can either have the nuisance abated or possibly have them rebuilt to habitable structures. This year, we had every one of them on the list got our pre-letter, which was a year in advance to say, hey, you have an issue with your house, there's an opportunity to fix it or do something, and if not, it'll be on this meeting. So here we are with this meeting. We have had contact with a few of the property owners who are either gonna tear it down themselves or are possibly looking at fixing up. I think a lot of that communication is probably evident because I think there may only be one person here for the hearing. Most of them were fine with discussions that we had at the staff level. So with that, I just wanted to again, well, the one thing I want to say is, you know, remember, just like in past years, we still want to move forward with ensuring these get designated dilapidated because it does give us teeth down the road in the event somebody doesn't follow through with their promises or the building permits and such. So with that, I'll leave it over to Noah. He'll go through each one of them, and then obviously there's a public hearing, so if there's anybody here who would like to speak, may do so.
Okay. Noah? The microphone is yours.
Thank you Mayor. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Good. Okay, we have a shorter list this year, and we're hoping that will help the process be expeditious and more successful. So we're gonna try with a shorter list of 10 homes this year. So, let's see. Okay. First home we have is 201 East Perkins. The utilities are all disconnected. The last known gas, electric, and water was in 2019 at this address. We've had, since 2015, we've had 12 code violation cases ranging from tall grass and weeds to accumulation of material limbs, things of that nature. Is there anyone here to speak for this house today?
Is there anybody speaking for 201 East Perkins? Right? Okay. All right, next one?
So are we not taking action as we go or no? Do it all if you have.
I would assume we would take action on, on the whole packet on the next agenda item. So this agenda item will just allow the council to have dialogue with members of the public if they so chose.
Okay. All right, now, so, okay.
The next house on the list is at 301 North First. This house had utilities, gas, electric, and water up until 2022. We've spoken with the property owners and they've expressed interest on refurbishing the home and getting it up to minimum maintenance standards. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Hearing none.
Okay.
Move on.
Moving on. Okay, the next property is 401 East Grant. This has not had, well, actually, they have no account of any gas ever being hooked up to this house. So I don't know how far back their records go, but gas, as well as our water department over here, neither one had any record. And the electric last known was 2009, and this house has been vacant for quite a while. We've had eight code cases since 2015, a lot of vagrancy at this address. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Hearing none.
Okay. Next one is 407 East Grant, right next door to the previous house. Same property owners on both. And this one actually had some utilities on record, but they date back to 2008 and 2009, but everything is disconnected. It has not had as many code violations, but the condition of the house is relatively the same as the previous one. Is there anyone here tonight for this house?
Move on.
Okay. Okay, this next one is 512 East Grant. Hasn't had gas, utility since 2008, water since 2020, and electric since 2022. We've had 12 code cases since 2014, most of them tall grass and weeds. There's no outstanding liens or anything on the property from the city at this time. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Nobody. Move on.
Okay. Okay, next on the list is 616 East Lincoln. This home actually had gas, electric, and water up to 2021, but did not have any, hasn't had any residents there in almost 20 years. Not many code violations. They've kept the property itself mowed and maintained and cleaned up of any kind of debris, but the, the condition of the house invites vagrancy, so. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Hearing none, move on.
Okay. Next one on the list is 624 East Harrison. Gas and electric, last known services were 2013, and last known water service was 2014, and I don't believe the home has been occupied at any time since then. We've had 15 code cases since 2015, a lot of tall grass and weeds, vagrancy, things of that nature. We have spoken to the current property owner. They said they're working to close on the property soon, and we advise them to let the new prospective owners know of the condition and of this hearing about the house. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Hearing none, move on.
Okay. Next one is 919... Next one is 919 North Ash. Our water service has no record on account for this house. Electric has been disconnected since 2005 and the gas since 2006. We've had 13 code violation cases since 2014, mostly tall grass and weeds and accumulation of limbs and debris. The property owner has reached out to me and expressed interest on renovation of the home, but no permits have been issued as of this time. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Hearing none. Move on.
Okay. Next one is 1423 East Lincoln. Last known gas and electric service was 2020. Last known water service was 2021. Since 2014, we've had 11 code violation cases, mostly tall grass and weeds and accumulation of material. Now, I have spoken with the property owner on this one and they have actually begun renovations on the exterior of the home. I don't know if you guys have seen the home in the last month or so, but it looks significantly better than what these pictures portray. The front porch has been completely fixed. There's no debris around the house. They painted, fixed the roof. So we told them that was a good start, but we also encouraged them that, to keep going and to go through our offices for the necessary permits for it to become a habitable structure. Is there anyone that'd like to speak for this house today?
Ma'am, come to the microphone. Go ahead and come to the microphone. Identify yourself and if you're a resident of Guthrie.
No, I'm not a resident of Guthrie. I'm a resident of Enid, Oklahoma.
Okay, identify yourself, please.
Vicki L. Baldwin.
Okay.
B S C K I. Yeah.
Okay.
We have taken steps. We've got pictures. We've taken steps to renovate, start renovating the house. We've cleaned up all of the debris on, on the property. This is my contractor and all we're needing is time.
Okay. Questions from the council? How long have you owned the house, Ms. Baldwin?
Since 2013, when she passed.
Okay.
Well, we've owned it since, about, because we owned it before she passed away, so.
Okay, but you've owned it for a fair amount of time.
Yeah.
What, what has caused this change now that you're now, at this moment in time, starting to invest in improving the exterior and interior of this property?
Oh, we see the validity of fixing the property up, making it livable for somebody to live in. And it's just taken me a minute. My husband died and that's no excuse, but someone was living in my home. And she tore up the home. It wasn't anything, it wasn't left empty. And she flat-toe up the house. And because I was with my husband, I was, he was an invalid and I just took care of him. I was by myself, so that was secondary to what I could do. And COVID kept her in the house. I, I took her to court and I couldn't put her out because of COVID conditions. And finally, when she left, she left it in total disarray.
But the good news is you've made strides in fixing it.
That's the aim.
Yeah. And so that's the good news and enforcement recognizes that and I applaud you for that.
What do you guys plan on doing?
I'm her contractor. I'm Tyrus. Tyrus Construction. And I peppered her out on her house and she was just struggling to take hands me to fix it up.
Sure.
And only had a certain budget. So we went in and cleaned the property up and cut the trees. She cured outdoors, put the door locks and closed up the bottom porch. The front porch was falling in, so we secured that, refrained it, reconstructed and put a new roof on the front. Just cleaned the whole property inside and out. We patched all over the inside, as well as the sheet block and patched the floors on the floor.
So you can rent it or sell it or whatever. That's your business at that point.
We have pictures here showing the cleanup.
Yeah.
It looks better.
Cool. Looks good from here.
Yeah. Yeah.
But as, did I understand that at this time, no permits have been pulled for this property?
Correct. No permits have been pulled. Tyrus and I have been in contact about it.
Okay, and you understand the process that you have to get, you're in the construction business, so you know the process, that you need to get these permits to make this happen.
Correct. And I understand that permits, if you change the structure of the building. And we're not basically trying to change the structure. We're just doing a make way because everything is being structured within there, you know.
So the utilities inside are fairly good?
Everything's intact. Everything's intact as far as the back pool and the plumbing, you know. Probably using the torque steel and the sink, stuff like that, you know, carving and tallowing and painting and stuff like that. Everything's pretty much structured. We won't be changing the framing structure of the building.
Okay. But I do commend them because I've seen a lot of these go the other way.
Yeah.
I have. And this one's going the right direction.
Clearly, everybody, everybody up here.
Yeah.
Including the staff at the city would like to see the owners take responsibility and rehab the facility.
Yeah.
We don't want to demolish it. We want you to take responsibility and make it inhabitable. Make it a part of our community. That's what our preference is.
Yeah, that's our aim.
That's what she's doing.
And that's what I've been doing here. I've been, I stay in Enid, I'm here every day since the last eight years. I've been revitalizing the Guthrie area. I did over several homes around here, West Side, East Side, you know, we fixed them up.
Okay. All right.
May I see those pictures since you brought them? Might as well look at it.
See, it has a pretty significant difference over a matter of a weekend.
It looks good. It looks really good.
When they started today.
I mean, look at the, look, there's just the two pictures right there.
We painted it red as well, cut the trees.
I don't think you're going to have a problem with this. Just keep going like you're going.
And.
Looks like you're going to rent it out right now.
Ms. Baldwin, one of the things that we emphasize is that there needs to be continuous improvement. Not, not a weekend of busy activity and then nothing happening for two or three months. There needs to be continuous improvement in the process of renovating and making this happen. Making it back to an inhabitable structure. That's the key. Any other questions or comments?
I would ask Noah, what, what further has to be done for you to say, check, we're going to leave it alone?
Well, we haven't been inside the home at all. We, so we haven't done any inspections. Our, our building inspector hasn't. The only inspection that was done was around the perimeter in order to.
So at this point, the roof's been repaired and the place has been cleaned up. Why didn't, why couldn't it just sit there in the condition it's in as long as it's clean and visually good?
The condition being vacant, is that?
Yes.
Is that your question? The main reason is for vagrancy. It doesn't take long, especially in a small town.
Eddie, have you seen any?
For the, for the homeless to know where to go.
I don't know why this is on there.
So I guess I'm asking, does it require, do you require a place to be rented? If I have several rent houses and I don't rent them, what difference does that make to the city? As long as there's somebody watching the property, you keep it.
Yeah, the, the key is to try to get it, or we want it to get back to a habitable structure. Whether it's used after that, you're right. There's no requirement. It can stay vacant. We don't require it to be rented. You know, we don't have required to live there. The key is to get it back to a fully habitable structure in all regards.
Everything operating.
Yeah, operating in that. So if they get to that point, they don't necessarily have to have somebody live there. And generally, if they get it back to that point, they're going to also take care of the property itself. So we usually don't end up with where we're at now.
And it's in your best interest. It looks like a nice rental or seller.
Really good job. Make some money on it. That's what I thought, too. It looks great.
By myself. My husband, it was a different matter.
Yeah, no, I get it. It looks great.
Okay. Any other, you have any other comments to make? Any other questions from the council?
Looks good.
Okay, Noah, continue on with.
The one recommendation I do have, excuse me. One recommendation I do have, and Dan and I have briefly talked about this. If, if our building inspector hasn't been able to do an inspection all the way down to the framing, things like that, it's very difficult to be able to write off on it that everything is, you know, in proper working order. I would be very comfortable with, and I know Dan and I have discussed this, a home inspector doing an inspection, private home inspector doing inspection, letting us see the results. And then if we, if at that point we feel need to go in and do inspections, then we could address it at that point. But that would be sufficient for us. That's a minimal cost, fairly simple process that would satisfy us.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Do that, have them go in there.
Whenever you're finished.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, on a timeline that is within reason and we can discuss that timeline.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And thank you for the efforts that you've done so far. And our wish that that continues.
All right.
Mayor and council, I do want to add and just be clear, we're not taking any action on this item. And therefore, any discussions we have on a sidebar are not necessarily to be taken into consideration when taken action. So we talk about off-site inspectors or anything like that, that is totally completely separate from the action that you'll need to take. And, and that should coincide with if any permits were pulled, you know, we shouldn't be inspecting something that a permit wasn't pulled for and vice versa. So we'll need to take all that into consideration, come back and look at it and handle it from a staff perspective.
I just want, and with that being said, I just want the lady to be able to sleep easy at night knowing that she is done a phenomenal job up to this point on this house.
She's down the right path, that's for sure.
Exactly. From what I've seen over the last nine years. So you're welcome.
We agree. Thank you. You too.
Okay, I think we're ready for the last slide of the evening here. Okay, our final house on the list is 1802 West Warner. The electric and water services have no account on record, so that predates their records. Last gas service was in 2007. We've had nine code cases, code violations since 2016, mostly tree limbs and accumulation of limbs and debris. Is there anyone here to speak for this house?
Hearing none. Anybody on the council have questions for Noah? Okay, I will.
Well, actually, are you able to get a hold of any of these people?
Oh, yes. And as Dan said earlier, we've spoken, I have personally spoken with all but one, previous to today.
Plus they get noticed.
Yes, they get, yeah, they get their notices. The one that I haven't personally spoke with, Dan did. It just happened to be a day that I wasn't in my office. So we've had contact with all 10 of these property owners. And some of them are moving towards demolition. Some of them are moving towards selling. Couple others are moving towards renovation. So.
Do most of them live here or do they live out of town?
In this specific list, about half and half. Enid, Enid was the closest that wasn't in Guthrie. A couple of them, Washington, actually. So. Yeah, and it was, you know, family inheritance type situation. So.
Yeah.
Generally, most of the lists, it is local, locally owned, but this list is about half and half.
See, I'd like to see, and Adam, you haven't seen it, you'll see it over the course of time in doing this, but this is the first one I've seen that's actually, to me, doesn't even belong on this list.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously. Because we've seen most of these stay, as you know, Jeff and Tracy, in the dilapidation mode and Steve, to where we're, you know, the bulldozers are going out there and taking them out. This, you know. I just want people to be able to sleep easy when they know they're doing a good job. That's all.
As long as it continues.
Yeah.
Within a reasonable timeframe.
Would a chain holding the walls up?
Yeah, but no, that doesn't count.
Suffice?
Sorry, but that doesn't count.
But it's been tried.
It's been tried.
Okay, any other questions for Noah?
Well, the upside is at least they don't have a tree growing up through their house. That's the upside.
Okay, I will need a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Anybody, any concern or question about that? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to close public hearing on those dilapidated structures. Item number seven, resolution number 2024 dash two declaring structures as dilapidated. Dan?
Yeah, this is just a formal resolution that's adopted to, again, designate and dilapidated. And so with that, I'll leave it with the council.
Okay.
Wait, what's?
Dan, Dan.
Well, we are designating, as I understand, we are still designating, even though we have one exception, that there's been some, some movement happening. We're still designating it as a dilapidated structure and allow the staff, the staff can, we're not going to go out and bulldoze tomorrow.
Right. And that's the thing, I should elaborate a little bit. The ones just like that were here. And even the one that's on First Street, a lot of them have been in communication with us that want to fix it up, save it. And so with those, we do work with them. Some of them, we've had maybe a year or so as how long we've worked for them in the past. But as long as they communicate with us and come in, we work with them. The key that we like to see is we still designate it dilapidated because if they don't communicate with us or all of a sudden one day just leave, it gives us the teeth to move forward to abate the nuisance. Where if it's not on that list, then we're back to square one.
And see, Adam, when we get a big rain, we don't want to just see all of a sudden it go right back into the condition it was in.
So even though we are voting on, on these structures as, as being identified as dilapidated, again, it's not necessarily saying that tomorrow the bulldozer will arrive.
Yeah, we're just moving forward.
It works with the staff, gives them a little bit of leverage. And if the owner does all of a sudden just vacate, the process of removing the dilapidated structure is in place and moves forward.
You know, but while we're on this subject, and I've always wanted to address this over the course of years that we've been doing this, is that houses like this, if you were driving down the road and you were going to choose your 10 dilapidated structures for this meeting or throughout time, and this house looked like this today, you would keep going. You'd drive right by it. You'd never stop at it. And so there's a point in time where it needs to come off of the list. And I know, I mean, I don't know how deep we can get our fingers into interior on what the interior looks like of these houses, as long as it's sound and it's not going to blow over with a high wind. Because something like that, you got to admit, you'd drive right by it. You'd never stop and put it on the list.
Yeah.
In today's condition, as it is in this picture right now.
Right. And, and I will say that, you know, because of this program, we are getting to a point where, you know, the houses probably aren't as bad as they were two, three years ago. Because obviously, we're getting them taken care of, whether they're being abated or fixed up and that. So, you know, it is working, obviously. And, you know, this is one of the instances where they did step up well before the hearing to make improvements and that, which is great.
Yeah, it's real great.
Yeah.
Because usually they don't.
That's what we want.
Right. No, exactly. Yeah, absolutely.
So there's no set time, once they're on this list, that says a bulldozer's going to show up?
180 days.
180 days.
By law. Yeah, but again, if they're in communication and that, you know, we definitely work with them. But by law, there's a 180-day period in that for us to give them opportunity, if you want to say, in that before we actually send the bulldozer.
But there also is another side to that story. I've restored some homes actually here in Guthrie before. And so there is a point where you actually, you know, you might need to borrow money to complete a project on the inside, for example. And if it's on a dilapidated list, it's never going to happen. You're never going to get a bank to fund it.
No, you're correct. And what we just, and you may remember, I think it was a couple of years ago. We do have a kind of a checklist and a process where if they're going to follow through with fixing it up and that, they can come to the council to request it be basically removed from the dilapidated list so they can get a loan. And through that process, they show us that they got the funding from the bank. They have their plans in that ready to be issued with the permit and all of that. And if they, or there's a couple of other things. And if they have all that, then they can come back and ask for it to be taken off again so they can get the loan. Because we've done that in the past with a couple. Because that has been a hindrance. Yeah. So we do have a process in the event that that would happen.
And it puts the responsibility back on the owner.
Yes.
And where it ought to be.
Yes. Yes.
But I want to make sure that we're advising them of that, like this lady here, that she knows that.
Yes.
And has that information, that's all.
Yeah, no, we do, because again, we, you know, it's, the last couple of years have gone way smoother than they have in the past, and, yeah, and a lot of that is, again, we communicate and we talk, and, again, try to get things ironed out and, you know, not going out with the heavy hand immediately.
Yeah, no, you guys are doing a great job, so. Any other questions, Dan or Noah? See, entertain a motion.
One more.
Oh, sorry.
At the end of the hundred and eighty days, it's done, Dan.
No, not necessarily, that's just what we have, that's what we legally have to give them.
Right, okay, yeah, I understand, this first step is the legal part to issue that notice and hopefully kick them into gear.
Right.
And so it...
That's just the point where we can take action if no action is taken.
So, after that time, it's really, if there's nothing been done, and the city has not been contacted anything, is that when you go out for bids?
Yes.
Dan, can you provide some clarity there? So, are you saying that there is no action taken for a hundred and eighty days after the council approves this resolution?
Yeah, because the law changed a couple of years ago, because like an abatement locally is thirty days, but for dilapidated structures, it's a hundred and eighty days.
Okay, so we give them thirty days from the date that the council adopts a resolution to take action on their own?
Yeah, or come in and talk with us, get a plan, whatever is necessary.
Okay, and then between day thirty-one and day one hundred and eighty, then we go through the process of securing bids for the property, and then day one hundred and eighty-one, we start demolition if needed.
Right, yeah.
Unless they're working on it and have given, you know, done all this.
Okay.
Which we've had a few, not many.
Yeah, we, I think, yeah, there's been a few in, we, the last couple of years, we've probably been at fifty percent compliance, either fixing up or they tearing it down themselves, yeah.
I'm more on the fixing.
Oh, yeah, 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 some unfortunately are just...
Too late to ask it.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, and did we get a second before the question?
You did a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes.
Thank you, Dan.
Unanimous approval then to approve resolution number 2024-2, declaring these structures as identified as dilapidated structures. Item number eight, Oklahoma Department of Commerce Energy Efficiency Grant, award of eleven thousand eighty-five dollars. Eddie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Staff has applied for and received approval for a eleven thousand dollar grant from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce, which relates to the energy efficiency program. So, the following city facilities will be included, the Armory, the Cemetery Caretaker's House, the Highland Hall Facility Waste Connections Building, the Liberty Lake House, and within the Armory, the Neighborhood Solutions portion of that facility as well. So, the entirety of that project has been awarded by Department of Commerce, and we request approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
Unanimous approval then to accept the eleven thousand eighty-five dollars for the lighting retrofit grant project. Item number nine, Highland Hall Roof Replacement Project. Eddie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Due to some recent wind and hail damage at Highland Hall, O-MAG is covering a replacement of the roof. We received three bids when put out for bid, the lowest bid from Integrity Construction and Roofing at twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, the highest bid from Grayco Roofing and Construction at seventy thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars. Staff recommends approval of Integrity Construction and Roofing. O-MAG's payout for this project is approximately forty-six thousand and some change, I'm sorry, thirty-six thousand twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents. So, there will be no cost to the city on this project with the recommendation...
What happens to the balance?
The recommendation of the low bid. We retain that.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you see this kind of variation in estimate, are there red flags that the low estimate, for instance, isn't covering the total picture?
Sure.
The difference between seventy thousand and twenty-three thousand is pretty significant.
That's a great question, Mayor. So, the second bid that we received was almost exactly in the middle, so the low bid was twenty-three thousand, the high bid was seventy thousand, and the middle bid was forty-two thousand. So, all three companies were on different ends of the spectrum here, and originally, staff came to me with two bids, I said, get a third. The third one, we've reached out to former clients of the company, we've asked for reviews, we've asked for references, because it is a lower bid, and all of the references were good, they came back good. So, we've previously worked with Ozone Roofing, which was our middle bid at forty-two thousand, they did the roof on the library facility. We had good experience with them, however, the difference between Integrity and Ozone was substantial, so it was a difference between costing the city money and not costing the city money.
And they get paid at completion, not upfront, anyway.
That's correct.
So...
That's a good job. I guarantee you, the citizens like to see that, too.
Absolutely.
Staff has done a great job.
Citizens, speaking of citizens, each one has to go by the same bid list, the same material, same shingle weight, then comp, whatever, all compared.
That's a great question, sir. All of the bidders were given the specifications provided by the claims inspector from O-MAG, so they were able to see the damage, and that's also in your packet, photos as well.
Okay, alright.
Excellent.
Any other, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to accept the Integrity Construction Roofing bid for replacement of roof on Highland Hall of twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Item number ten, resolution number 2024-06, creating a capital improvement project oversight committee. Eddie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This resolution formalizes the council's action taken on January sixteenth, creating the CIP Oversight Committee. So, we've taken the information given to us as it relates to the terms of each appointee coinciding with that council member who appointed them. We've outlined that here in this resolution. I will say, we did add in the original three appointments that were a part of the city manager's selection process with subsequent approval by the mayor. So, whomever's sitting here will have to provide their three names to the mayor to provide a yes or a no, which is a typical formality with our other boards and organizations, the mayor either makes the nomination, or he reviews that appointment. So, at this time, all of that is outlined here in your resolution, and staff recommends approval.
Okay.
So, move a question?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, questions at all? Okay, submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to approve resolution 2024-06, creating the Capital Improvement Project Oversight Committee. Item number eleven, build and invest in Guthrie, presentation. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, something exciting. If the council may remember, last year in August, we came to the council, we had developed a program called BIG, BIG in invest, or build and invest in Guthrie, to have pre-approved building plans, so we would have the plans all ready to go, so literally, you could come in within a day or two, have your site planned, get a permit for a house and go build. So, tonight, I'm presenting the final results, or what our catalog is going to look like for that program. When the authorization was done, it was to have Frye Design Company, who's a local company here, we worked hand in hand with them since August to get where we are today. So, I'm going to hopefully go through fairly quick our catalog. I'm very happy how it turned out, and I think it's going to be very, a very good program for the community. So, the first part of it will just tell the vision and, you know, why neighborhood infill is important. The last time I was here about this program, I had discussed, one of the big factors was to try to provide an affordable housing type, try to keep the square footages more moderate in that, so, and even the ability for smaller properties, so between the houses and the property, you can get a fairly reasonable, even in new construction, priced home. The process will be where, step one, where they'll come in and talk to me, we'll have some discussions to make sure that fits on the lot, and some preliminary discussions, go over the program if they have any questions and that. Step two would be a building permit submittal. I will have a separate application that I'll have specifically for this program. On there, it will have a check mark of what house they want to build, and there's a few other things specific to this, but essentially, they're just going to need their building permit, a site plan, their water, and there's a plan waiver, which is part of the, which is part of the application. Then, we will review it, if it's, if they're going to take it literally as it is without any changes, we can get that done in a couple of days. The only thing they're going to need to do after that is hire their electrical, plumbing, or mechanical contractors, but as far as the building permit and that, they're out the door. We will have a flat fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, which will cover the inspections that will be required through the process.
That's the plans and everything, right?
Yeah, yeah, so their permit fee for that, out the door is a hundred and fifty dollars.
That's the plans for the construction of the home and all that?
Yep, everything, all that, yep.
Wow.
And then step four is, pretty much, start construction, get your inspections, get your CFO, and enjoy your new home in Guthrie, and that. So, with that, I'm going to go over the housing types. There was a total of eight homes, or single-family homes and two duplexes, so there's a total of ten. Four of the single families were on our narrow lots, they were for twenty-five-foot wide lots that we have here in the community, and then the single-family standard were for the larger lots, which are typically fifty-foot wide lots, and then a couple of the duplexes.
Dan, before you, let's go back to that. Let's explain, can we put the presentation back on the slide, please?
There we go.
Okay, let's go to the next slide.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the explanation for the twenty-five-foot lots and the fifty-foot lots, most of the platted lots in the original town site, the original platted area...
Yes.
Are only twenty-five feet wide.
Right.
So, to build a house in a lot as it exists today, you need at least two, to meet current setback requirements.
Yes.
So, if you'll just elaborate just a little bit on that and explain, okay, so we've got four for the original, and then we've got four that you could fit on the fifty-foot.
Yeah, because as Eddie indicated, you know, we currently, by the minimum lot sizes, you can't go out and create a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot lot right now by code. However, we have a lot of basically legal non-conforming lots that are in our original platted area, that had homes and still have homes that were built on them that were twenty-five foot wide. So, those are still legal lots of record, so if they tear down the house, they still have the ability to build a house, however, they have to meet current code setbacks and that. So, obviously, that takes a twenty-five-foot wide lot, where the, most of them were built to twenty-five foot width, to fifteen feet. And that may not seem like a lot of room, but you would be amazed, and you'll see some of the homes here, what you can get with a fifteen-foot wide house on those lots. And if any of you have gone to North Division here, where you've seen kind of the shotgun style house on that, that was a twenty-five-foot wide lot, and same scenario. So, we wanted to try to accommodate both lot types within our original platted area, because as Eddie indicated, a lot of them have been combined, so they're the fifty by one forty, but we still have a significant number that are in that twenty-five-foot range, and it, you know, it, it's not fair, obviously, to a property owner to say, you can't build on that anymore, but again, if we want to encourage infill, we definitely want to accommodate or make things to where they can take advantage still of those lots.
What about the home builder that wants to develop an area and come in with these small, skinny little homes?
He could.
You're not going to have an issue with that?
No, no, because, because the key...
They had a standard lot size.
Yeah, because the key to this is, you'll see, is the style of the home is keeping character within that original platted area and kind of that historic look that we have.
I'm not talking about that platted area, I'm talking about a whole new area.
Oh, no, no, this is strictly right now for the original platted area, original townsite area.
Yeah, what I was talking about is a home builder and developer going in, buying a piece of land, and coming in with these plans.
Like Guthrie Farms?
Whatever.
Yeah, no.
Mission Hills.
No, that's not what these are for.
This is kind of like, those three houses of chapels right down here that looks...
Yeah, right, yeah, these, this is strictly for the original platted area, and we don't have acreage in that area where somebody could come in and basically do a subdivision. So, that, like I said, that won't happen with these.
So, do you have any developers coming in asking for these smaller homes?
Yes, but it's usually one or, yeah, one lot or two lots here. A lot of them have been local, there's been a couple out of town that have come in and asked, but most of them are local in that, and they're looking to take advantage of the existing lots that are within our original platted area.
I'm talking about, and then I'll be quiet, I'm talking about a developer coming in on a piece of property, asking for these smaller homes.
No, no, no. It's strictly been for, yeah, it's been strictly for infill.
I know that, but it hasn't happened where they're asking for them.
No.
I know the one builder that we're talking about behind Mission Hills wanted a lot of little homes in there as well.
Yeah.
So, that's why I bring that up.
Yeah, and that's why I was saying that this program is not set for that, and part of the approvals was that it would be utilized strictly for infill within our original townsite area. So, they would have to go through the similar process like Mission Hills did, where they'd have to go through a planned unit development and try to get those approvals.
And there's not a legality issue with that?
So, if there's not a, if there's not an existing twenty-five-foot wide lot, we wouldn't allow somebody to plat a subdivision that way. So, that's why this is only applicable in the original townsite.
But all the fifties just used to be twenty-five?
Yeah, yeah.
Or they've been combined.
Yeah.
Multiple lots, multiple lots.
Yeah, pushed together.
But, yeah, the, all the original subdivisions were twenty-five-foot wide lots, and that's not...
So, when somebody built these bigger homes, they just got two or three lots?
Yeah, combined lots, yeah. And that is pretty typical of most cities across the country, not just Guthrie, and that's the reason they did it, is you could basically figure out your lot size, I'll take one, or I'll take three, and so most cities, older cities like Guthrie in the early nineteen, you know, late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, even like our downtown, all those were original twenty-five-foot wide lots, and that's very typical.
Like the ones out there on Harrison, on the east side of the temple, somebody built three new ones and they look fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, and again, that, you know, and I'm being happy about that, because we have that overlay, and so again, we're getting not only infill, but it's keeping within the character of, you know, our, yeah, our community and the history of our community and that, which I think is very important. So, this is the first, yes, this is the first home, and the first few are the ones that would fit on a twenty-five-foot wide lot. This is called the Lily, it's around a thousand square feet, two-bedroom. A lot of these you'll see is two-bedroom, the duplexes go to three-bedroom, one of the other single families is three-bedroom. But again, these are looked at to get the homeownership and get people the ability to get into the homeownership-type setting. I've gotten calls from, in fact, one in particular was a single mom who was a teacher in Edmund, who was looking to build here because she could not afford to build an Edmund, and a home like this was exactly what she was looking for, because there's affordability in terms of that, but it also goes on the other side, where if you build this, you can then obviously rent them at a more reasonable price, because you don't have that high end to try to, if you want to say, recoup your investment in that. And again, these were all meant to be within the overlay to meet those requirements. We have some areas of our original platted area that is outside the overlay, and they could be utilized in that area as well, kind of on East Lincoln or Grant and those areas, they're not in the overlay, but they are part of the original town site, so they could still be used in there. But as we're talking with Mr. Bothroyd, outside of the original platted area, it's not going to work. This is the Lily Two, it's again a similar, where it's around a thousand thirty-two square foot, but gives a little different look in that, so there's some diversity with the looks of the homes. Then we go to the two-story versions of these, where it gives a little bit more square footage. These are, this one in particular is around thirteen, well, it is thirteen hundred and eight square feet, another two-bedroom, two-bath, and then another version of a two-story for the smaller lots. Then we have one of the ones that fit on our fifty-foot wide lots, it's a three-bedroom,[1791.91] It's a three-bedroom, two-bath, but again, around 1,300 square feet, so it's not, you know, too large. But as you can see, it's, it was designed after kind of our traditional bungalow-style homes that we see throughout our original townsite area. This is another version of that. It's a little bit smaller, it's just under 1,000 square feet in that, and as you see, all of them have porches, which is a requirement of our overlay. This goes to the two-story version, around almost 1,400 square feet, and then the Sunflower, which is another two-story version, around 1,300, almost 1,400 square feet. And then we have the two duplexes. This is one of the duplexes, three-bedroom, two-bath duplex. The living area is around 1,400 square foot for each of the units. And then here's a two-story version of the duplex, again, around 1,400 square foot of living area, three-bedroom, two and a half bath. So that's everything as far as the, in this catalog, as you see, what has all the layouts. It will be put on our website and obviously given to anybody that would like to, you know, have a copy of it, utilize it. As I indicated, there are some that have interest in building a few of these. Everybody I talked to was very happy about this. They really liked the idea of being able to streamline the process, come in, get plans, and, and go build. And as I said in the beginning, the thing that I really like about it is we're having housing sizes that can still make it affordable, even in today's economy.
So I know things are changing daily and going forward and back and up and down, building materials and everything else, but did you happen to get a thumbnail from any of these builders on what we're looking at cost-wise, so that-
There, yeah, I mean, yeah, a, a few of them said that if, you know, they could probably get it down to 150,000 on some of the smaller ones. But I figure it's probably going to be around 200,000 for most of them, maybe at the high end, maybe 180 in there. It really depends on, a lot, as you probably know, the interior of what they want to do. You know, granite countertops versus standard and, you know, and all that. So a lot of that pricing goes into there, but even if you take, let's say, $175 a square foot on a, on a house, kind of a going rate, and you have a 1,000-square-foot house, you're at 175,000 in that. So, you know, I've seen a lot of these larger homes that have been rehabbed going for 330,000 and around 300,000. So, you know, it significantly drops the price point, but you also get a new home.
Yeah, I, you, you can hardly open a paper any day of the week and not read something about the need for affordable housing someplace in our country and in our state.
Affordable 175, hundreds.
Well, I mean, it's all relative.
Yeah.
Certainly all relative, the question, and whether it's homeownership or renting.
Right.
The, the, the need for affordable housing is clearly a, a significant need in our community and communities across, across the United States. I salute your efforts to-
That's good plans.
-to make these infills and to make it more affordable for the contractor at the starting end, because here's your design all set for you. So I think, I think both of those things are a great step forward. Now whether we think 175,000 is affordable or not, it's, it's, it's as good as what, what we can probably do.
Yeah.
And I tell you, if you're moving from San Francisco, you think it's wonderful.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, even from Edmund, honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I just wanted to finish and say, you know, I, I wanted to thank, you know, first of all, Eddie, kind of who saw my vision and kind of understood where we wanted to go with this program and that, and then the council for doing the same, once we brought it to you to allow the funding to be put forth and now have a finished product. I think this is going to be a really good asset for our community. But I also finally want to mention Shonda. She did a perfect, hit it out of the ballpark job with our catalog. There's some other communities that have these catalogs, even out of state, and ours probably ranks up there as one of the nicer-looking. Most of them just have a basic black and white type thing, and so I'm really proud of what we've been able to do with this and looking forward to the program, so thank you.
And she does a great job.
Yes.
Clearly. Any other questions in the council?
Good job, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, Dan, thank you very much, appreciate that. Item number 12, Historical Preservation Commission Appointment. I'm making a nomination to appoint Darrell Covington as a representative from the Logan County Historical Society for an extension of his, his existing term, another term to expire March 31st, 2027.
Are we going off of the term limits these days?
No.
Oh, I was just curious, I didn't know if we were.
No, this is, this would still be his second term.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just make your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to appoint Darrell Covington for continuation of term on the Historical Preservation Commission to expire March 31st, 2027. Item number 13, discussion and consideration, consideration of possible action for mayor's nomination of Brent Linford on the Planning Commission, also for a second term for, to expire March 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I hit the wrong button.
Just, I'll just say.
All votes are in.
We have, we have an excited person that voted twice. I, I will call that as unanimous approval for the nomination, or the continued appointment of Brent Linford to the Planning Commission to expire March 31st, 2027. Item number 14, discussion, consideration to confirm the mayor's nomination to appoint Lloyd Lance IV to the Planning Commission, term expire March 31st, 2027.
So moved.
I think that's kind of a neat deal because he's the fourth one.
There's, there's a lot of Lances in that, in that lineage, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
That have, that have all served.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just make your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to appoint Lloyd Lance IV to the Planning Commission to a term expiring March 31st, 2027. Item number 15, City Manager Report. Eddie?
Yes, Mayor and Council. If you are not aware, the first CIP Town Hall was held last week here in this room. We had a good turnout. If you did not get a chance to come out and see that, please go to the website, watch that. Let me know if you've got any questions. I want to brag, on the Oversight Committee, they have put in a lot of hours. So when we, when we took this survey data and the council said, go forward, this Oversight Committee has toured almost every facility that the city has. And so they've gone to the fire station, they've gone to water treatment plant, we didn't take them to wastewater treatment plant, because that was included in CIP number one. So they've been out to Owen Field, they've, every project we have, municipal pool at Highland Hall, they've been, every, every site, they've been there, boots on the ground, they've got to see it, and so when they're out in the community, they can answer questions, they know the issues, they've got it all right there, so. With that, prior to the Town Hall, a week before, the Task Force Oversight Committee went out to Owen Field. That project is currently out for bid, and we look to receive bids back second week in April, I believe that's April 9th. So that will be coming up on your second meeting agenda in April. We do have a ceremonial groundbreaking tentatively scheduled for Thursday, March 28th at 10:00 a.m. I will send out a calendar invite for all of you, so you've got that information. It will be ceremonial in nature, so we'll come out, we'll, we'll have a nice photo op and do the turning of the dirt. So you'll get to see that again Thursday, March 28th at 10:00 a.m. Second CIP Town Hall is scheduled for Tuesday, March 26th, at the fire station at 6:30 p.m. So you'll get to come out, see the slideshow we've got put together, see a couple of videos from the Oversight Committee and what the, what the challenges and opportunities are for the fire station. Field Representative for U.S. Senator Langford, Peyton Burns, visited with the airport director, Kayden Young, and myself, came out, took a tour, got to see some of the opportunities we have ahead of us. We're excited to see that visit come to fruition. In addition to that, Congresswoman Stephanie Bice came to town. We got to see her out at the airport, and you've seen my email, I'm sure, the press release that's gone out. Congresswoman Bice did get a $6 million funding appropriation in the consolidation, Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2024. So the U.S. House has voted to approve that funding mechanism. However, there is some question still out there yet with the government operating under a continuing resolution which funds the government at a previous fiscal year maximum. Are the new funded, newly funded projects able to proceed? So we've not been able to receive confirmation on that. The Congresswoman was very excited to see the plans that we have for the airport. We got to share the schematics, talk about the future of, of a possible restaurant on the field, and so great interaction. Mayor Getling was there, Vice Mayor Geary, Edmund Mayor, Darrell Davis, myself, Kayden, Shonda. So we put out the spread for the Congresswoman. She visited for about an hour, hour and a half. It was a good time, it was a good time. In addition to that, good news today, we received, actually late last night, the Oklahoma Arts Council has awarded both the Pollard Theater and Owens Art Place some state ARPA grants. They have not yet awarded the amount, so they, they've not shared the amount, but they have shared the award, so that's, that's great for us to see. We've got two local historic items here in Guthrie, you know, the, the Pollard Theater and Owens Art Place Museum that will receive state ARPA funds through the Arts Council. In addition to that, the, we did receive our official 2023 Tree City USA designation. Shelby and Teresa from Public Works have been working diligently, and I believe the Parks Board is also going to have an agenda item for Thursday to discuss a proper celebration for receiving our designation. You will see also a press release go out from the office after we have moved forward with next steps on that. We are upon the season of festivities, and so the Renaissance Fest, if you've driven over the Vidal, you've seen Cotmwood Flats has been transformed. John Pagonis and his team have done excellent work out there. That kicks off this weekend. Come out, tell your friends. We look forward to having some good weather, hopefully. There's rain in the forecast on Thursday, and we hope that stays clear of the flats for this event. The TAP grant on Division, you've seen the sidewalk project, they're moving along relatively quickly, so we're excited to see that come to fruition finally. And so they have 180 contract days from their start date, which was March 6th. We hope the weather will keep them, keep them moving right along. Other than that, we're preparing for 89ers, so staff is ready for 89ers, police department. I know they've begun their training. We've got some new officers who were in the bike patrol unit that are receiving their training as well. So staff's getting ready, we've got a lot of good things going on, and then just as a final reminder, Next Generation 911, that date is April 2nd, which is also a council meeting date, so that's all I've got for you now.
All right. Any questions? Eddie? All right. Item 16, comments from City Council. Councilman Rob?
Just like what City Manager said, we have Renaissance Festival this weekend, which will be exciting. We're also putting on at the depot a Irish Celtic tea-
That'd be great.
-with a live Celtic musicians playing, and Gauges will provide the food, and we're having like 20 different teas to try, if you want to come feel fancy by them.
When is this?
Uh, this weekend, yep, at the depot, yeah.
This weekend's Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
It's Saturday?
Yep, yep, it's on Saturday, right, during the middle of that, so it's really fancy, and like I said-
What time does that kickoff?
Um, good question. No, no, I think it's a, I think it's at 10, I think it's from 10 to 12, this is too out.
I think that's Mrs. Rob.
Yeah, my, my wife's putting this on.
Ah.
I'm mentioning this for her, yes. But everyone dresses out, yep, they dress up in the Irish Celtic dress, and like I said, we have live musicians, and they give a discussion about Celtic music, and I usually give a historic talk for like 10 minutes, but Gauges provides the food, and we have 20 different teas, a lot of them you've never heard of before to try, it's really, it's really fun. But then, yeah, the Renaissance, too, should be twice as big as it was last year, so attend that as well, and that's all I have.
All right. Councilman Taylor?
89ers is coming up, so if anybody's got float ideas they want to put in, they need to do that, I know we were talking about that, so we need to get that done. Thank you, staff. Chief, I think you did great on that. I think, I've been following this for quite a while. This is going to be fantastic when this thing gets up and running. It's going to be really nice to have something like that, with, you know, like I said, it'll, if somebody's having troubles or whatever, they can text, or, you know, a lot of times you can't call if some guy's got a gun to your head, or you can text quietly, and they can follow you along, that's going to be nice, so, other than that, that's it.
Councilman Williams?
Wait, I'm sorry, two to four. Two to four.
Got the time.
Two to four, I got it, I looked it up, two to four.
Everybody shows up at 10.
Go to our Facebook page, go to our Facebook page if you want to go, two to four, two to four. All right, yeah, yeah. Go to our Guthrie Depot Facebook page if you want to go.
There you go.
Councilman Williams?
I just wanted to say, Dan and company, staff, good job on those, that housing catalog, that's impressive, Shonda. Also, the way you're keeping up with these, I learned a lot of more about the dilapidated issue, so I appreciate you explaining all that, so, that's all I had tonight.
Okay, Councilman Bothroyd?
Yeah, I echo that, you guys, you've been doing it a long time, Dan, and Noah, you're getting in the whole crux of it. I like the 10 deal, that, I think that works out good, and I know you guys have done, bun a dun. Bun a dunch, done a bunch. I know on South Division, you've been doing stuff in Morgan's area and all that out there, so you've got your hands full. And Chief, I commend you, we're lucky to have you, by the way, if anybody hadn't told you that lately, so.
Don't, don't give him too many compliments.
That's all he's getting on that.
No raises.
But I do want to mention Shonda, because she's come a long way. She was hired in our tenure here, and she just really has come a long way. Very impressive.
Yeah, I agree with all the ideas she's come up with, especially with the stuff down on Main Street, that's fantastic.
Very impressive.
Yeah, the shops, and, and again, publishing a professional product, if you will, the brochure for this big, for the big project-
Yeah, it's an awesome catalog.
Is, is just, it's amazing, and, and it's what makes a difference between people coming and getting excited about it and people just tossing it away. So, great job by Shonda, Noah, great job on the presentation, Dan, appreciate that. 911, again, this is a parade that we are excited to be in front of, head of the parade, and the citizens ought to be. It's, it's the kind of thing that until you need it, you don't know, but boy, when you need it, you need it right now, and this technology gives the citizens of Guthrie and Logan County access to frontline, top, top of the tier safety, so that's great.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm finished, Brian. You know. I'm finished.
Well, well, since-
I forgot. I was in the- There wasn't anybody down there, I was going to go back to you, Brian. I did want, I did want to say one last thing about the, the catalog, that's kind of where I was going on it, was that it is impressive, and, you know, if we can push a campaign out there when people are moving to Guthrie to take a look at these historical neighborhoods that have no homes available in them, but they do have the lots, and it may make sense to, you know, really make a push on that.
Yeah, yeah, good, good vision, good product, and I think the outcome will be positive, too. The Renaissance Festival, again, as you identified, probably twice as big as, as last year, and, and they got the time right, I think, on the festival.
Right, right.
And, and, and I understand they got a pirate ship this year.
They do.
So, you know, it's going to be-
And a trébuchet.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's going to be, it's going to be a really, really busy, busy time down the flats.
It was a sailboat, wasn't it?
Let me, let me mention also, we have Vietnam Veterans Day, March 29th. Since 2008, there's been a designation of Vietnam Veterans Day, separate from Veterans Day, if you will, separate from Memorial Day, but the, but the 29th, if you, if you separate from Memorial Day, but the, but the 29th, if you, if you have a neighbor, friend, family member that served during Vietnam, Vietnam era, tell them thank you, and, and tell their families, thank you. I personally would like to thank all the citizens, men and women that served during that time, thank them personally for their service, for wearing the uniform, but also for the families that gave them the great support while they were in a trying time, as any war is. So veterans, Vietnam Veterans Day, March 29th. A little bit of advance, we've got, we've got trash off coming up next month, first of next month. Let me just say that we have a program here in Guthrie called Adopt a Street Program, and if you have a business with employees that are looking for a project, if you've got a neighborhood association looking for a project that makes an impact, Adopt a Street is one, and it's on the website, go to the Guthrie City website, but it is a great program, we provide the bags, we provide the, the, all of the necessary things for picking up the trash, all you have to do is provide a little manual labor, but it certainly helps with our, with our community to do that, so consider that, if you're a business owner, consider that as a project. If you're a civic organization, I know that a number of the civic organizations already do, a church, consider Adopt a Street here in Guthrie, America.
Mayor, one quick thing, you kind of said Vietnam deal, the bricks are now being replaced up the, where we have all the more walk around, and I know I've replaced three, and it's starting to kind of look nice now, so if you haven't been up in a while, and you probably want to go up, you might be able to see, now you're just now, it's not like my dad's, you couldn't even see it, couldn't find it, it faded away so bad.
So, this is at Honor Park.
Yes.
Veterans Memorial on our, on our park, and we are replacing pavers there, and, yes, go on up and see it, and in fact, if you want to help a little bit with pulling some weeds while you're there.
I see you out there pulling weeds, I don't stop.
I've got a pair of gloves, your size, your size.
I drive up from the depot, he's out there.
All right, last thing, Brian, Brian, you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I was coming back to my... All right, ladies and gentlemen, oh, we're adjourned for this meeting. I open our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of March 19th, second item is the Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C. A is the approval of Public Works Authority Meeting of March 5th, B is the approval of Pay Application Number 34 for 225,000, $225 for work completed on the wastewater treatment plant, and C is the approval of Pay Application from Southwest Water Works for 1,000, I'm sorry, 132,945 dollars for water main replacement project. I'll entertain a motion on the Consent Agenda Item.
Mayor, Mayor, before you make that motion, could we also have the same amendment that we had in the City Council, that same date has carried over to that minutes, the minutes document.
Instead of March 19th.
It needs to be March 5th, yep, we got a little ambitious with the date, so we apologize.
Okay.
Am I motionable with that as well?
Entertain a motion with the correction, correction amendment, and who seconded it?
I'll second.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, with the, yep, with the amendment, yep.
All right, any other questions, comments, submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes, unanimous approval from all those present then to approve the Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C with the correction amendment. Item number three, Agenda Items Removed From the Consent Agenda, there were none, that being the last item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we can go home, very adjourned, thank you.